Okay, good morning, everyone. Uh, we'll start this meeting of the Kuchichin County Board of Commissioners to order. And, uh, we'll be doing that remotely, of course. Um, first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda with additions and board deletions. Well, besides the deletion that you just mentioned. Brian?
Motion check, move.
I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride.
Mr. Scholz.
Yes, I can break, Mr. Scholz. Any discussion? Do you mind on favor? Uh, uh, call for the vote remotely. Uh, Mr. McTavish.
Hi.
Mr. McBride.
Hi.
Mr. Scholz.
Hi.
Mr. Scholz.
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Uh-huh.
Do we, do we have an addition from the highway on the approval of, uh, four sixty-one? That was just kind of in, in an email?
Uh, yeah, that's down, uh, NC.
Oh, it is in there, okay.
Yep.
My apologies.
That's all right. Um, okay, uh, approval of the agenda is approved. Uh, how about the COVID nineteen update?
Kathy? Mr. Chair, if I may, just interrupt for a minute. Um, if anyone is not speaking, if you could, you can move to your, um, phones, uh, or your computers. We're giving a little bit of feedback. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Mm-hmm. Okay, good morning. Uh, numbers for the state, the entire state, there's eighty-four thousand nine hundred and forty-nine total cumulative, with seventy-eight thousand two hundred and thirty no longer needing isolation. There's been a total in the state of one million seven hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine tests administered. There's two hundred and twenty-three people in the hospital as of today, a hundred and thirty-five of those are in ICU. The hospital trend is certainly moving downward with, um, the least amount of people being hospitalized, um, since the beginning of the, um, pandemic. As far as Kuchichin County, we remain at ninety-six cumulative cases with eighty-six no longer needing isolation as of last Thursday in their weekly report. There's been two thousand five hundred and eighty-one tests administered and we are at a four percent positive rate with the state averaging, average being at five point four percent. Uh, there's the three companies that are working on the vaccines, continue to work on them. There was a short, um, break with one of the trials, but that was over in the UK uh, because of a, um, infection that company experienced in their spinal cord and they're not sure if it was related to the vaccine or not. Um, but my understanding is those trials have resumed and they are still hoping to have a vaccine available by the end of the year. They are creating a plan for how those vaccines will be dispersed. And with, um, vulnerable people being first to receive them, healthcare workers next, um, teachers and essential people after that, and then following, uh, young adults and children as the last phase. There is concern about how they are going to get enough, uh, equipment to, and enough vaccine to meet the needs. So that's about it. Um, our numbers are staying good. We're hoping that they stay that way. Schools have started and hopefully nothing new will come up because of that.
Okay. Any questions for Kathy?
Mr. Chair?
McBride.
Yeah, Kathy, two things real quick. Uh, number one would be, I just read that now the percentage of people saying that they accept the, a, a vaccine is down to like thirty-three percent. And also, uh, what is the status of the, the flu shots? I know it's very imperative to get the flu shot. You, you don't want them both at one time.
Yes, we, um, the, there is a lot of concern amongst people as far as getting the vaccine for COVID and, um, that will probably be a problem. It is, especially is a problem for any vaccine that might be available before the election. People are saying they will not get that vaccine, they don't feel it's safe. Um, I think that the, the companies developing the vaccine need to be putting out a lot more information to people so that they feel safe and secure in their knowledge that these vaccines are safe. But there are a lot of people that are just gonna wait and see what happens to everybody else that gets the shot. Um, education is the only thing that's going to counter that and hopefully they will, the companies will be real transparent and will get that information. The other thing is the flu shot. We have worked out a plan for, um, providing flu shots to the community. They will, it will be, we don't have a date to start with. Um, they're still waiting on some, uh, getting some of the vaccine. We have a little bit, but not nearly enough, but we are going to have two days a week in the afternoons and we're gonna run the flu shot by clinic. So they will be started by, by the end of the month. Um, I believe we were talking about next week or for sure the week after.
Okay, that'll be that. Uh, they'd be available with the county, but I'm sure Essentia and Rainy Lake will be probably having them available too. And of course, we've lost, uh, Kmart now, so they're probably, the three spots where it'd be available.
Right. That's correct.
Mr. Chair?
I was in, I was in at the clinic, uh, the last couple of days and I asked about it and they said we have flu shots, we have the vaccine in, we do not have enough to start the program. But they did not want to advertise or put it out and have people coming down there and being out of it. So they were waiting to get more in. They didn't give me a timeline on it though.
Yes, and that's the same situation here too. We're waiting to get, um, enough to start the clinic. But, but Derek was confident that that was going to happen, um, within the next week.
Any other questions for Kathy? Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
Approve September eighth, twenty twenty minutes.
I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schobel.
I'll second.
And I've got a second by Commissioner Pavlik. Uh, any discussion on that? Do you mind, uh, uh, call for the vote? Uh, Pavlik? McBride?
Hi.
Schobel?
Hi.
Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you. Motion's carried. Human resource does this.
Good morning.
Morning. How you doing, Tino?
I'm doing well, how are you?
Good.
Wonderful. So yes, I would like to approve, uh, separation of an eligibility worker.
Did you say approval? Or, uh?
I said we need to approve the separation and then, uh, well, it's actually a demotion. Then we'll need to fill the vacancy as well.
I would move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, if I can interrupt, we're actually, um, yeah, we're, it, it's a position that, uh, this person was demoted to was for eligibility worker, is that correct? And then we're gonna vac, and then we're gonna fill the vacated child support officer position.
The eligibility worker is the position that she's gonna be taking.
Correct.
That's correct. Okay. Thank you, Chair, for clarifying that.
I would move, Mr. Chair.
I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride. Second.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Commissioner Schobel. Any discussion? Do you mind calling for the vote? Pavlik?
Hi.
McBride?
Hi.
Schobel?
Hi.
Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay, Chair? Uh, Tino?
Yes, and then we also have a separation notice for a part-time correction officer.
Do I have a motion?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Commissioner Schobel. Okay. Second by Commissioner Scholz. Discussion?
Uh, will, Mr. Chair, uh, permit? Will we be to that position?
Uh, it's a good question. Uh, Tino?
Um, it's part of my first time in roster, so we are in the, um, process of filling. But they can be, um, of course, something we could probably, uh, team up.
I can't speak.
Yeah, I'm impressed.
And, Mr. Chair, if I may, just add to that. So Jason, what we have is we blanket authorization to always maintain a roster for those part-time deputies and COs so that we don't have to wait to come to board and, um, for hiring. So, um, when they're part-time, and, and I'm getting still a lot of feedback. Lynn, I think it's you, can you mute us? Okay, that's a lot better, thank you very much. So, um, Jason, this was done many years ago. We've, uh, we've, we've, uh, had a board motion that lets us go ahead and hire, um, without board authorization for the part-time deputies up to a roster. I think the roster's at, um, eight.
Nine.
Is it nine now? Okay. Okay, so, um, but we still do need, um, board approval for separations. Um, and then, um, we will most definitely be, um, trying to fill that part-time spot. If that answers your question.
Okay, thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
All right, I'll call for the vote. Pavlik?
Hi.
McBride?
Hi.
Schobel?
Hi.
Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Um, perfect. Set twenty twenty-one, one hundred service and fire service taxing district, please.
I'll move.
Boy.
I've got a motion for Commissioner Scholz.
Second, Mr. Chair.
And I've got a quick question, Commissioner Schobel. Uh, discussion?
Uh, Jenny? Yes.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
First, they should have gotten me in, because I took the meeting in last night and they set their levees, so it was the same as last year if I remember right.
Yes, that, he received that dislocally. So thank you for following up on that.
Uh, Jenny, I have a question. Um, do you, uh, do you have an idea how many, um, drivers or how many ambulance people city a little forecast? Um, no, I do not. Uh, Kevin, but on that, we've got a couple full-timers to man during the day, but the rest are volunteers and I, last time I talked to their ambulance association, I did not get a number on that.
Okay. Do they run, um?
A lot of, are, are, are on staff and on stand by volunteers. Well, that's, it's like a fire department, you know, they're, I'm sure they're not sure who's, who's, who's cover the call, but it's, uh...
Okay, so when, when they're on call, then that's, they're getting paid, right?
Um, I believe that the ones that, the couple that aren't the full-timers are getting a, uh, a stipend for being on call.
Yep.
If I remember right, uh, but I have not talked to them in the last few months. That's what I remember anyhow, yeah.
Okay, the reason I was asking is it seemed like kind of a large amount of an increase.
It is a large amount and they've been having a real tough time. They had to raise it, um, but that was just from necessity.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Well, I'd just like, like to thank, uh, all the volunteers that, you know, provide this service, all that there is, uh, you know, it'd be really difficult, uh, to live there and, and know that, you know, know that you have somebody that's gonna be able to help you. So, uh, I, I, I really appreciate that.
Yeah, it is, it is a good thing that there's people that step out to do it. And, uh, especially in these challenging times, you know, so it's, it's good.
Traditionally, the ambulance drivers and, yeah, the chorus paid group of people who walk in first.
Yeah, okay. All right, I'll, uh, I'll call for the vote on that. Um, Pavlik? Where'd Wade go?
Um, I saw that Wade was, uh, his internet speed was a little slow, so he might have gotten bumped up. I'm sure he's going to go ahead and join.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner McBride?
Hi.
Um, Commissioner Schobel?
Hi.
Commissioner Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. And Wade, you can do whatever you want, I guess. So, um, motion's carried. Uh... We, okay, checks were done. Uh, CARES Act, there's a, uh, who purchase of IT equipment? Got you. I thought I saw Dr. Ickey somewhere.
I'm here. Sorry, I turned my camera off, trying to see if I'm bandwidth for others. Um, yes, so this RDA I'm submitting is going to be funded hopefully through CARES Act funds, um, given board approval. It's already gone through the CARES Act committee and, uh, you acted on a resolution last week to allocate up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right now, this is my best guess, uh, based on PFAC or receipt of department, but it's an ever-changing thing. Don't be surprised if I back again. Uh, but, uh, for now, I'm looking to buy, uh, three laptops, five monitors, and six desktop printers that build in a little bit of extra device. Um, two spare laptops, although one's already been spoken for, and a few spare monitors and a couple of spare printers. Uh, trying to be conservative so that we spread these dollars out where they're really needed, but at the same time, stay on top of it hence the multiple requests to buy equipment.
Okay, which is for the board? Anyone?
Move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, I've got a motion by Commissioner McBride.
Sorry, I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Schobel. Uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I, excuse me. I, I just, no, thanks, Jackie, for moving forward on this. I mean, it's a, it's a great opportunity and, and our, and well-needed for the county and our workers, you know, to upgrade to, uh, you know, we don't know how long we're gonna be into this, uh, COVID-type issues and meetings and, and, you know, employees have to be, you know, working mobile and at home. So I think it's a great use of the, the CARES money.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, Kevin, I'm, I'm back, I video went out, so Kevin wasn't able to get it back, so I'm on the phone.
Okay, okay, well, glad you came back anyhow. Um, any further discussion? Um... I have a motion and a second on that, right?
Yep, yes.
I thought so. Uh, okay, I'll call, I'll vote. Uh, Commissioner Pavlik?
Hi.
Uh, Commissioner McBride?
Hi.
Schobel?
Hi.
Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Motion is carried. Uh, that resolution approving the financial assistance and stabilization program and application for renters and homeowners. Jen, do you, uh?
Excuse me, Chair, thank you, um, for, um... So, so the CARES Act committee met and we, um, have, uh, there's some requests from individuals, uh, for rental and, um, homeowners, uh, assistance. Public Health and Human Services is going to, um, be the contact for this, uh, program. These are grants that can be awarded, um, that fit, that, um, meet the certain guidelines and this, um, has been reviewed by the CARES Act committee. The committee did recommend that and it also has been reviewed by our consultants and, um, they, uh, actually provided us the template for this, uh, program. So, uh, everything's good there. Um, it provides assistance to individuals and families, um, whose income meets a certain threshold level, a hundred and fifteen percent of the state median income, which is, uh, about a hundred and five thousand dollars for a household of three. Um, there's certain requirements that they do have to be current, uh, certain utilities before, um, the COVID started as of March first. Um, if, uh, they can, um, receive assistance to help with, um, um, eligible uses such as rent, security deposits, utilities, food, uh, mortgage payments, uh, um, and then, you know, some other, uh, grants, some, if there's any septic pumping, things like that. Uh, maximum amounts are five thousand dollars and, um, there's also an application that, uh, Public Health and Human Services has put together that meets all of the CARES Act guidelines.
Okay, which is for the board?
I would move on that, Mr. Chair.
Got a motion by Commissioner Schobel. Have a second.
I'll second it, Kevin.
Thank you, Commissioner Pavlik. Uh, any discussion? Commissioner McBride?
Uh, Jen, is there a dollar amount put into that fund? That's, that's...
You know, this is gonna fall under the commu-, uh, community resilience and there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated to that sort of bucket right now. Um, although I don't think that, um, right now, we don't have as many requests, um, for that amount yet, but, um, we'll see what comes out in the next month or so. Um, but we're, we're probably looking at reallocating some of those funds into different buckets as we determine needs.
Yep.
Um, and yeah, so this is gonna fall into that community resilience category.
Any further discussion?
Um, I have one thing, um, I think we had a first by, uh, Schobel and the second, um, who, who did that second?
I had a... Commissioner Pavlik did. That's right.
All right, thank you very much.
Um, I have a little question and yet this answer maybe isn't readily available right now.
But it's...
A hundred and five thousand for a household of three, what is it of, uh, for a household of two?
That's a good question. Um, it's a, it's ninety-one thousand eight hundred dollars for a household of one or two. So, um, that's, they're using the a hundred and fifty percent of the state median income, which is pretty standard, um, for the programs that we're seeing come, come through.
Okay.
I, I would hate to say, but that would cover the bulk of the population.
Yes, it does, um, cover a lot of the population.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's a tremendously high figure. Okay, enough about that, but I just thought that was a high figure for, for that, so...
Okay, well, thanks for the question, Lynn. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing that now on favor, uh, I'll call for the vote. Pavlik?
Pavlik, hi.
McBride?
Hi.
Schobel?
Hi.
Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Hey, uh, Highway Department business. Uh, transfer days, what are you guys' stages?
Yep, I'll take the first one. Uh, good morning, everyone. So the Highway Department is requesting authorization to award for CT twenty twenty dash zero four. That's an overlay on UT four sixty-one. Uh, everyone might remember that UT four sixty-one is located in the Eagles Nest area. We did a, uh, pullback reclamation earlier in the year on that road. Uh, we had the bid opening for the overlay on, was yesterday at, uh, two PM. We received one bid, it was, uh, it was a good bid. The base bid from KGM was one hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents with an engineer's estimate of one hundred and sixty-six thousand thirteen dollars. So we came in, uh, quite a bit under the engineer's estimate. We would, uh, recommend awarding, awarding that to KGM for the hundred and twenty-nine thousand eight hundred and eleven dollars and twenty cents. We also have, uh, bid alternates in there for paving the north and south legs of UT three forty-two. Uh, those were good bids as well, they came in under the engineer's estimate, but at this time, we would, uh, recommend not pursuing those, uh, simply because we, uh, we have a number of other projects that, uh, that will likely take up some of our local funding. We have a, a bird repair down Silverdale that we'd like to do, uh, prior to the end of the year, as well as some equipment issues that we're, that we're dealing with right now, so...
Travis, question. Uh, if we award this bid, completion date is yet this fall or is it move into twenty twenty-one?
No, the completion date is still this fall and there'll be no issues with meeting that completion date.
Well, KGM is awful busy.
Yes.
Which is the board?
I'll, I'll move, Mr. Chair.
Uh, was that, uh, was that Scholz or Pavlik?
Yeah, we...
And Wade? Okay, thank you, Wade. Uh, I have a second.
I got, I'm McBride.
I'm McBride, Commissioner McBride. Uh, any further discussion? Or any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the vote. Pavlik?
Pavlik, hi.
McBride?
Hi.
Schobel?
Hi.
Scholz?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Thank you.
Thank you.
And which of you guys is doing the next one?
I've got the next two.
Okay. What part is it?
Okay, the first one here is approval to go out for request for proposals for an engineering consultant in the intersection control evaluation study for Highway fifty-three and the Casad three thirty-two intersection. In the past, we have received requests from the Minnesota Timber Products to improve this intersection and to facilitate funding for such a project. A intersection control evaluation study needs to be completed. And this is to recommend a preferred project to resolve the conflict at, at the intersection. Mind dot will provide fifty percent of this funding, up to a hundred, fifteen thousand dollars of the study. The estimated cost of such a study is between twenty and thirty thousand. This evaluation is usually the first step in resolving what to do with an intersection that has known conflicts. The county, the county funding for this would come out of, out of our annual Casad maintenance funding, funding. And, uh, I put a reference there if you want more information of this, uh, intersection control evaluation. And I also included, uh, the email I got from Mind dot, uh, late last week where they agreed that they would fund up to fifty percent of it. So I would just like to be able to go out for request for proposals for this.
Okay. The three, seem kind of one in the same?
They're similar, but really we should, uh, we should have this, they call it ICE study, the acronym, done before we even go out to get... study, the acronym, done before we even go out to get funding from Mindot on the freight program. This should have been done probably years ago.
Well, Mr. Chair, this is Wade. I'm, I'm willing to move. I mean, it's much needed and I appreciate the effort, uh, by the Highway Department. Thank you. I'd have moved on that too, but I'll second Wade on it.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Pavlik, second by Commissioner Skoye. Um, didn't we do a, a study on that a few years back?
I, I think what, I think what happened is we did an in, internal study, but what Mindot requires for any, uh, intersection, uh, on their ownership, uh, in, in fifty-three is their ownership, they require one of these, uh, intersection conflict evaluations.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Pavlik?
Aye.
McBride?
Aye.
Shoglu?
Aye.
Skoye?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Did you need one motion favor? Did you need?
I, I need one more. Um, usually this ICE evaluation or study would be done before, uh, we apply for funding, but if, but talking to the state, it doesn't have to be. So right now, the, uh, the state has Minnesota Highway Freight Program funding out there and it, it basically, we were getting into this late, but, uh, applications are due the end of this month. So what I'm asking for now is a approval to apply for the Minnesota Highway Freight pro, program for funding a roundabout at Highway fifty-three in the Cassad three thirty-two intersection. Again, we've received requests from the timber producers. Uh, in the past, we have tried a message board system to warn traffic of the long load entering the intersection during the winter harvest. Uh, the Minnesota Highway Freight Program has a solicitation out for funding in two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-five. The Highway Department wishes to apply for this, for a roundabout at this intersection. And by the way, we'll be doing this ICE study, you know, at the same time and it will come up with the preferred solution. Uh, the program provides ninety percent of the pro, for the project with a ten percent contribution. Uh, any of our contributions will come out of our Cassad maintenance, uh, construction funds. But like I said, the applications are due September twenty-eighth this year. And basically, we just complete the application in-house and if, if you approve that, I would come back at the next meeting and ask for a resolution and support for this project. Now, the, a little bit more about this, uh, Mindot did their two thousand and nineteen, uh, District One Freight Plan, uh, that was completed, uh, in the fall of two thousand and nineteen. In that project, they looked at two alternatives, uh, for this intersection. One of the alternatives was a flashing, uh, sign that said stop ahead that was on three thirty-two. You know, I think all the loggers that are coming into that intersection know that there's a stop sign and if they, uh, if they choose to not come to a full stop, they made that decision well before. They don't need to be, uh, reminded about that. The other alternative they looked at was a roundabout. And they did a concept and, and I think I've attached that in here and basically it shows a roundout, roundabout right at the intersection there and you can see that the roundabout fits rather nicely in that area. Um, uh, the roundabout would, uh, alleviate, I think, the concerns on three thirty-two that the loggers have with, uh, having to come to a complete start, stop, and then climb up onto Highway fifty-three. Uh, you know, at first when I, and, and I've talked to the Minnesota Timbers Producers and, and they, they feel, you know, they would like an overpass mainly, but I told them there's, you know, that's a twenty million dollar project and probably will never get funding for that. Uh, but they said a roundabout would, uh, be beneficial, so. I've talked to Ray Higgins mainly at the Timber Producers and it's, I'll tell you that I think this is a very long shot. We don't have a lot of engineering done, we don't have any engineering done, uh, but we can go ahead in-house, fill out the application. You know, one of the criteria on the scoring is project readiness. Uh, we do not have the project, uh, engineered yet, so the project readiness is pretty much nil. But I think it, it does tell, it does make the stance that we're interested in doing something at this intersection and in the future, we can apply for other funding. The cost that was estimated in the concept was, uh, uh, one point eight million. I, I think it's going to be more along two million, but it is a lot less than an overpass. At that, I'll take any questions or?
Dave, Mr. Dave, Mr. Dave? Dave, if, if, listen, to move forward, would the, would the state be responsible then for design and, and, and engineering the whole project?
Uh, you know, we would, we would start the engineering until we got approval, so, and I think, uh, engineering costs are covered in this if we would get the, the grant, but I, you know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say we have a good, I think we'd have a good project if it wasn't for the fact that we don't have much, uh, you know, we don't have a shovel-ready project. I mean, I think the, the traffic counts, the other thing that isn't very, you know, when we look at the intersection, we look at the crash history, there is, there is no crash history and that's a good thing, but from a project standpoint, uh, it says that the need's not really there.
Yeah, but it's just a matter of time. The near misses are not recorded, but there's lots of them out there.
Yeah, and we've talked to Mindot, we've had two meetings on this already. Uh, they indicated they'll, uh, give us a letter of support for this project. Uh, when we go to, and that's where this ICE study came on up too, and they said, hey, you need one of these first and, and, or need to have one of these completed. And so we immediately, and, and Mindot came back and said, hey, we'll fund fifty, fifty percent of it. I also reached out to the city and I reached out to P C A for letters of support if they would be willing. And I said, after this board meeting, we will, we will approach you officially. Uh, talking to Ken Anderson, they had a committee of the whole meeting and he was going to bring this up to them at that time.
Any further discussion? Um, were Timber Producers, and they're okay with, uh, roundabout?
Yes. And Wade, you verified that, right, Wade? That's, yeah, from talking to them, they are, of, of course, they were looking for a bridge, but, uh, that was, uh, shooting out far enough that, you know, on, with the roundabout, I think they would be very happy. They are having their, their big powwow meeting later this, the first part of October and I'm sure that this is going to be on their agenda, but yes, I would think that any, any truck crossing that intersection would be much happier with, with that than what they've got.
Any, any further discussion? Um, I've got a motion and a second on that, right?
I think that was on the first motion, wasn't it, Kevin?
Mr. Chair, I didn't have, I don't have anything written down that you do.
Probably wasn't the first one, so.
So I'll, I'll move on him.
Okay, I've got a motion by Commissioner Skoye. One second. Second. Uh, was that you, Wade?
Yeah, that was me, Kevin. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Uh, any, uh, any further discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. Pavlik?
Pavlik, aye.
Mr.?
Aye.
Shoglu?
Aye.
Skoye?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Uh, let's see. Okay, anything else? Uh, it's, yeah, on, online to, uh, public comment. Uh, hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Who goes here?
Got a motion by Commissioner Shoglu. Second, Pavlik. Black Commissioner Pavlik. Call for the vote. Pavlik?
Aye.
McBride?
Aye.
Shoglu?
Aye.
Skoye?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for participating and, uh, meeting is adjourned and we'll go into, uh, committee of the whole. And committee of the whole, I'll start with, uh, department director updates. Ken? Who do you want first?
Thanks, thanks, uh, Kevin. Uh, I have a list on the, uh, it, it should have been, been included in your board packet. Uh, the Highway Department, you can go first.
Okay, if you can hear me, I'll go first and this was my first construction season as a highway engineer and, and things are pretty busy and I think things went pretty well thanks to, you know, our maintenance department, uh, the inspectors, uh, Trent, uh, so it was very interesting. Um, but I'll just jump off to, on with it. You know, our biggest project was Cassad one oh three to rebuild, uh, and we believe it will be substantially complete at the end of the year. Uh, paving is scheduled for the end of this month and, uh, you know, once that's in place, everything else should follow suit. Um, we're finishing up, uh, the bridge replacement on County Road seventy on the Cross River. Basically, we're adding two new lines of eight by ten box culverts. Uh, that should be completed by Wednesday of this week, so we can open that bridge back up by the weekend, so the glass hunters and stuff can get down there. Um, we're finishing up the milling overlays that we had in Little Fork on Cassad forty-three and forty-nine. Uh, this is about, you know, since, since I put this together, I mean, we're about a, a week behind on this and we believe the, the paving will be done this week and the striping the following week. Um, that was my phone. Um, where was I at now? Uh, we're finishing up the crack ceiling and mastic repair on Cassad five. That should be done next week. Uh, they started on the lighting project on Highway eleven at Cassad twenty and twenty-three. Uh, right now, they've got the, uh, uh, the boreings done for the conduits, for the wiring and they're in place and they gotta pull the wires and put the lights up, but we've been assured that that will be done this year. Um, we just voted on the UT four sixty-one milling overlay. Uh, that will be completed this year, uh, we awarded today. Uh, should be completed in October. Uh, we completed the annual striping project on several county roads. We completed sidewalk projects, maybe you've seen them, on Cassad forty-five and forty-eight. We just had a little thing right in front of the school. That should be done right in time for school here. Um, we completed a milling overlay on, in North Home on Cassad forty, or earlier this year. And one of the things I guess I'm really pleased about is the maintenance crews went out and did a bunch of work this, this summer. Uh, they finished up, uh, three FEMA culvert repair projects in Silverdale that were damaged during the two thousand and eighteen storm events. Uh, they spent quite a, they spent a couple of weeks down there in Silverdale working on projects. They reshaped the south pitch and culverts around Cassad ninety-three. That looks a lot nicer. We were fortunate that there was, uh, a contractor out there removing, harvesting or cutting trees and we got him to clear back the right of way. That worked very well. Uh, we repaired the bridge on County Road sixty-one over Dinner Creek, west of Marji. Uh, that bridge is unique. It's an, it's a, it was, uh, I think, an original by Doug Grendel, um, and something to see if you haven't seen it. Uh, we drain tiled Cassad nine. Um, and yeah, what we're gonna be doing here was we've got a gland seal repair on the Cassad one bridge over the Big Fork River. That should be done this week, uh, and they're gonna go about doing that. Uh, the other thing we're doing is wait, waiting to hear back on the twenty twenty build grant for the Van Lynn Railroad Overpass. Um, we're still working on the construction plans, although we're not pushing them because we, we really don't have a funded product, project yet. Um, and we recently, I heard, and I think everybody heard the governor announce about two Minnesota projects that happened, uh, knowing that they're gonna get funding, knowing that he announced those and we haven't heard about ours, I would say we will not be receiving any build grant funding this year. Um, but the announcement on their website has not come out yet. It is due today, but, uh, I, I think it's, we, it's not a hundred percent, but I would say we're not gonna be in the build grant. And that's three times now, so. Uh, we're working on applying for Cassad three thirty-two and Highway fifty-three intersection project with the Minnesota Highway Freight Program grant. Uh, applications due the end of the month. That's why I had the R B A in front of you today. Uh, we're looking to bid Cassad twenty angle parking in Rainier late this year, early next year. We have talked to Rainier. We've got a, they have agreed to pay for the non-participating costs, uh, and we would like to award that as soon as possible next year so that we can get Rainier back in shape before the Fourth of July holiday. Um, we're also working with Mindot on bridge bearing repair, pad repairs on Cassad one over the Big Fork River and County Road fifty-seven over the Valley River. Uh, we're looking at, they, they said they can do this, these pot, these pad replacements anytime of the year and we're looking at, uh, late November, early December. We're gonna use Mindot, uh, to do this project. We'll support them, but it's gonna be a lot, uh, less expansion, expensive working with Mindot on, with the partnership agreement. Uh, the pads should be here this week, um, and I'm looking forward to see how they replace these pads and some of these bridges and jack the bridges up. Uh, also, we're finishing up on the Rose, uh, project memo and paperwork for the bridge replacement on County Road ninety-nine over Rat Root, the Rat Root. This is a two thousand and twenty-one project. Since it's a federal project, there's a lot more paperwork to fill out and we've already received, we will, we be, we've been notified that we will receive the funding for this project, so we're just finishing out all the paperwork so we can get a, a start on it next year. It will be done next year. Any questions? I know that's quite a list. I probably took too much time, but I tried to narrow it down.
Um, what do we have, um, dates right now for, um, for state bonding on that for an overpass?
Well, uh, it, you know, for the overpass, it didn't make the governor's bonding bill. it, you know, for the overpass, it didn't make the governor's bonding bill. But, uh, Eklund got it in, the bonding bill. Uh, as a separate line item, I believe. And right now, um, maybe they'll take up the bonding bill this year, maybe they won't. Um, they have not taken up over the last couple of times. They've had their special sessions and that's because of when they go and it, it has to do with when the bonds are funded and the interest rates and stuff like that, so that was not done the last couple of meetings. I've heard talk that they will try to do something on the bonding bill the next time they need. But, you know, with the election and stuff coming up, I, I don't know if we'll see anything being done. But I believe there's three million that's in the bonding bill, uh, right now for the Van Lynn Railroad Pass. But we haven't, we, you know, we haven't been notified anyways and they haven't voted on it yet.
So we, so we have three million or we don't have three million?
We don't have any money.
We don't have any right now?
No. And we've sunk a lot of money into this. I mean, in the past, we have used, uh, consultants to help us prepare the build grant applications. Uh, we're getting close to the thirty percent design, so the funding that we, you know, there's money we, uh, spent there, so.
All right.
And that's one reason, Kevin, we're not really pushing the, uh, design on this because, uh, it's just gonna cost money.
Yeah. All right, well, I'm getting frustrated with that, so. It's been a lot of years. And the need is there. All right, any questions for Dave? All right, thanks, Dave. Uh, Land and Forestry, Nathan?
Good morning, everybody.
Hi.
Hi. So just a quick update, kinda hitting the high points of some of the things we have going on here in Land and Forestry, um, uh, our basic forestry, civic culture type work that continues as normal by our field staff and the, and the folks here in the courthouse office. Uh, right now, we're working on putting together our November 4th timber auction packet. Actually, the field foresters have to have their appraisals in to us. They're due at the end of the week here, so we'll start reviewing those and getting that, getting that auction listing put out in the mail in the, in the coming weeks here for that tentatively scheduled November 4th auction. Uh, as you'll recall, last week, the board approved the, uh, interim spruce balsam policy change as well as the small logger grant, uh, CARES Act, uh, grant program. Uh, we sent out letters in the mail right after the board meeting last week and we're actually starting to, uh, receive those written requests in the mail. I see I have a stack of envelopes here on my desk today that came in the mail. I'm assuming that's, uh, that's correspondence from those timber permit holders regarding their options on those, on that program. Um, other thing that we're working on right now is we have our forest certification, our 34 certification audit coming up. Uh, normally that audit is a three or four day audit that, uh, that takes place in person. Um, this year, it's gonna be a little bit of a different situation because of COVID. There, the auditors are gonna conduct a hybrid audit. So the week of October 5th, it will be a remote desktop, uh, type audit to review our documentation and paperwork. And then later on in October, the end of October, they, uh, they will be, or the tentative plan is the auditors will be here in person for kind of a one day onsite audit where we'll go out and visit, uh, active, uh, more than likely active harvest sites so the auditors can look at that stuff, so. That's, uh, that's, the amount of information that's requested each year by the auditors is casual, so we're kinda, that's kinda taking up a lot of time right now. Um, other thing we're hoping to get off the ground here pretty soon is, uh, normally every year in the spring, uh, we do our aerial seeding uh, projects, so that's, that's our black spruce and jack pine sites that we've harvested previously. So in the spring through a joint powers agreement with the DNR, um, to ensure we have adequate, adequate regeneration on those sites, we have, uh, uh, through, in conjunction with the DNR, we utilize helicopter services to spread that, that seed, those seeds out over the sites and because that is kinda headed up through the DNR and because so many of those folks are still working at home, they kinda postpone that program this, this spring, so they're hoping to be able to do that yet this fall. So we're kinda waiting to hear back from the DNR on that. Uh, we're still working on our forest management plan revision process. We're working with the consultant on, on different modeling scenarios. We had hoped to, kinda be further along on that process than we are right now, but, uh, we're kinda, we're kinda fully coming along on that and we're, you know, we're hoping or waiting for a time when we can kinda actually have a public meeting and kinda roll out a draft plan for the public to kinda comment on and review, so that's still in the works and we're still working on that as, as we go here. Uh, we just wrapped up not too long ago our noxious weed screen on, along county forest roads and we're working on getting, uh, all the documentation in place, uh, invoices and whatnot to, uh, submit those costs to the, uh, the Minnesota Department of Agriculture to the grant program that we, or the noxious weed grant that we were, we were awarded for this year. We're hoping to, uh, close that out here shortly. Um, the other thing we're, we have, uh, we've started is a, the process for a tax forfeit at land sales. You'll recall a couple of months ago, or almost a couple of months ago, we came to the board to kinda get that initial approval to start that process. We sent, uh, letters out to the municipalities that, that the tracks, proposed tracks were located in and to the DNR as well. Uh, we've heard back from most, most of the cities. We still have not heard back from the DNR on it, on a couple that they are, they're entitled to comment on, so we're, we're keeping, uh, we're keeping for, we're going forward with that. Uh, the next dilemma on that that was gonna be, you know, do we hold the land sale yet this fall or not? And if we do, do we pare back the number of tracks that are on it? So I think we got, originally, we had proposed to have roughly thirty tracks on it. If you think, uh, maybe if you kinda guessed, maybe three or four people would, uh, would show up to be interested in each track where, you know, we're pushing that hundred, hundred person, uh, mark on, on the number of people in attendance. So where do we, you know, where do we kinda safely hold that type of an auction setting? Um, so we're kinda still contemplating that. If we just delay things till spring or if we kinda pare back the list, you know, just sell a, sell a few of those tracks. Um, the other thing I was gonna bring up with the, with the board is our, our county recreational facilities and campsites and campgrounds. You know, we continue to see high use in those areas. It's, it's a good thing, but, uh, we're actually seeing higher use than normal. I think just because of the COVID situation, more people are are getting in the outdoors and this is a trend. I, you know, talking to the other counties, they're seeing the same thing as well at their county parks and campsites, so it's a good thing, but, uh, along with more use, we're kinda seeing, you know, a little bit higher maintenance costs and a few other more, you know, a couple little issues arise, but, uh, we, we expect that trend to continue all the way through fall here and through firearms and deer season where, you know, more people are getting out in the woods and, and kinda trying to get away from things and socially distance as best they can, so. But with that, uh, those are kinda some of the highlights of the things that, that we have going on here in Land and Forestry. And with that, I guess I would ask or answer any questions that you have.
This is chair. Brian. Brian, you're muted.
All right, how's that?
Good.
Okay.
I can hear you now.
Nathan, when you do the, uh, the audits, uh, when you take them out into the, out into the, the job sites, do you kinda pick the ones you wanna go to or do they, do they make a request also? They say they wanna go to, to a D-LAC or they wanna go to an M-HOP or, or do you kinda do that?
No, we, you know, actually, that's what I'm actually working on today is, uh, they wanna know everything that we've had activity on since the last audit, last year's audit, so more or less, we hand it to them on a silver platter, so we have to list each track or each permit number, who the permit holder is. And then they want, we have to assign a risk category to it, so if it was along a water body or there's a grave site down the site perhaps, or something along those lines, we have to indicate all of that stuff upfront, so naturally, what the auditors do is they, they go pick those higher risk sites. Those are the ones that they go visit, so. So, you know, there's probably on this list that I'm preparing right now, there's probably eighty different permits. I, I can probably tell you upfront which, which five or six they're gonna pick to go to because they're gonna, they're gonna go down the list and the ones that we say, that we indicate are medium or high risk, those are the ones they're more than likely gonna visit.
So are those open, contracts or even ones that have been closed?
Uh, both, actually, yeah. Well, they, they wanna audit any of our activities since previous audit, so that would include both closed and active permits.
Okay, thank you. You have a question for me? Is that it, Dave?
Yep, that's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Administration. Ken?
Thank you, Kevin. I just have a, a short update. Uh, as you know, the administration has been, um, working on budgets, um, the plan was for today to, uh, do a, uh, overview of the budget with the county board after, after this discussion with the department directors. Um, and then next week, I am, uh, I would like to see if we can meet in person in the third floor, uh, courtroom and, um, have, have kind of an all-day budget session, uh, because we are running out of time. Um, we don't have, um, we have to step the lobby by the end of September, so. Uh, but we'll talk about budget a little bit later in this meeting. Um, the auditors were here, uh, the first week in September, um, that went really well. Um, they are still, um, asking for some additional information, but, um, I expect that the audit will be completed, um, well within the deadline, um, before the deadline and, and everything looked, looked good. Uh, we continue, I continue to work on the CARES Act. Um, the committee has been great to work with. Um, we're meeting again next week. Um, we are still, um, getting some new requests in and, uh, working with the consulting, the consultant to, um, make sure that, you know, we're meeting all of the requirements. Um, that's been taking a lot of my time, um, but it's been really interesting and, and then also, you know, listening to what the other counties are doing and we're still getting more guidance, um, from AMC and from Minnesota Management and Budget. Um, I, I did file the second monthly report for, for the month of August and, um, they changed the report form, um, from the, from July, so there's having lots of changes at the state level, too. Uh, one of the other things that I, I've been doing is working on the census. We've got, uh, census committee. Um, I didn't devote very much to the census during, um, the month of July and August, although we, we had, um, you know, at least monthly meetings before then, um, and, uh, we are doing a final push. Uh, the census needs to be completed, uh, by the end of September. Our numbers are not looking, um, the self-respons rate numbers are not looking as good as they did in 2010, which was a little bit disappointing. Uh, we, I, I did, um, uh, go to, uh, the Ruby's pantry event last night with, um, one of the other committee members, Myrna Meadows, and we, uh, passed out flyers and, and, um, we, we found that there were several people that had not completed the census, so, you know, hopefully, we're reaching out, you know, and touching those folks. Um, and we're gonna get some improved rates. I know that the census workers are also gonna be at the, um, Bacchus for a, um, and they have an event there on Thursday. Um, one of the lowest response rates that we had for the census was in the Boys' Fort area and so, uh, I, I, uh, am scheduled to be on their, uh, tribal council meeting agenda for tomorrow and so they're interested in obviously increasing those rates. We do still have some grant funds available for some marketing in that area and, um, we're gonna try to see if those rates can go up a little bit. Um, I am, we're also preparing for negotiations. I've got, uh, Janelle's been doing a lot of work in preparation for negotiations. All of our contracts expire at the end of 2020, um, a little bit different this year with COVID. I'm not sure exactly how that's gonna work, but we're starting to do some of those preparations. Um, Janelle's been working on that and also putting together any, uh, payroll costs related to CARES Act. Uh, Betsy has been, uh, working on, um, some grant reimbursement submissions and, um, the daily managing of, you know, making sure receipts are, are, things are receipted in and working with the auditor treasurer's office. Um, and Sherry is continuing to process payroll, um, she is working from home three days a week and coming into the office two days a week and that seems to be, uh, still working quite well. She is working, um, with coordinating the insurance committee. The, um, we're gonna have a insurance committee meeting this week and so , um, we'll be talking about what the renewals look like for 2021. And that's all I have for you right now. Do you, if you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Jen? All right.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks, Jen. Uh, Public Health and Human Services, Kathy?
We covered a couple of the things this morning at the board meeting, the vaccine, um, clinics for one. Uh, we will, as I said, we will be having two of those a week, starting about the end of this month. We will go to three days a week sometime in October when we see our numbers climb. Uh, we did do, uh, pulled together the numbers of how many vaccines we gave last year in each of the months and October seems to be the month that the majority of the people, um, seek that out, so we'll be doing that. There will be information going out on the radio, on the newspaper and on our Facebook page about when those will start and how that will work. Um, you did adopt the resolution this morning for the financial assistance that, uh, process will fill a gap that we have in assisting people with bills that gap, um, is for people who would not qualify for a regular emergency assistance money and so that CARES Act funding would be very helpful, uh, for them in that process. Um, in July, we were granted, uh, forty-six thousand two hundred and three dollars in op, state opioid money. And we have implemented a plan for how we're gonna use that with families who are, um, at risk because of drug use. And we have, so far in that, we have spent, um, we have sixteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars to use from July 1st of this year to the end of the year. And we have so far spent, um, four thousand one hundred and thirty dollars of that money for things that are not covered by, um, other funds. We also are working on some contracts. Our budget is, um, pretty well done except for a couple of contracts we have to have meetings for, which we're going to have very soon and finish up, um, with those amounts so that we can get them in that budget. Other than that, we continue to, um, have most of the staff working from home. It's going well. Jack has been great about helping us get situated so that it's working very well and there has been no change from DHS about face, face contacts or getting signatures in person or any sort of thing, so we're just gonna continue to work as we have been until that changes. We've not had any complaints from our clients, um, about how it's going. In fact, it appears that a lot of them prefer to be able to just communicate with their workers by phone rather than having to try to find a way to get up here, so, um, are there any questions?
Any questions for anyone or from anyone? Thanks, Kathy.
Yep.
Uh, is there anybody here, Jen, from the assessor's office? No? Okay. No, I gotta unmute.
No, I gotta unmute.
Anybody from the assessor's office? You're muted now.
I'm sorry, uh, no, there's nobody here from the assessor's office.
Okay. Thanks.
But I did see the county attorney online, so...
Yep, yep, I see Jeff, so...
Perfect, great.
Morning, Jeff.
Um, so, updates for us, um, we've been trying, as best we've been able to, to have court, um, by, by Zoom, uh, which involves Molly and I appearing from our offices, um, huge, huge, huge thank you to Jackie and the IT department, um, allowing somebody as technologically handicapped as me to navigate the system, it's no small task, and, um, Jackie and Phil and the CW crew have all been great to deal with. Um, it's been, it's been difficult, but it's, we've had an adage of difficulty because, um, Judge Leduc has not been, um, he, he was trying to appear remotely for a period of time, and then in, in the late July, um, announced that he was taking a leave, and that has now turned into his retirement, um, the end of August, and so we've kind of gone through this, um, cycle of, uh, retired senior judges coming in and providing, um, providing judicial coverage for us, um, but schedules are thrown off when you do that, um, and that's, each hearing, uh, you essentially have to re-educate the judge upon, okay, this is what's happened so far, you can't just pick up with, a judge should know where you're at, and so that's, again, up to a degree of difficulty for us quite a bit, um, but now, most senior judges, it's just, uh, the process that we're, we're working through. Um, we have not been able to, uh, conduct jury trials yet, our last jury trial was back by, I believe, March eleventh, um, it's a judge that's hard to social distance and put twelve people in a jury box. Uh, learned last week that, um, the court, um, plan for conducting jury trials has been approved by the state, and so we're going to, um, start, uh, that process again on, um, the week of October twelfth is our first trial block, um, my office has not yet been provided with what that plan is, um, I know there's gonna have to be some changes to the courtroom, um, but as far as how we're going to hold it up, um, we're not sure yet, I think, October twelfth is gonna be a, a, a trying week, if you forgive my pun, um, so we're waiting for the, um, governor's office to, uh, appoint a new judge to, uh, fill out, um, Leduc's term, um, and actually, it will be through the end of the year, and then, uh, the next six years, um, so that process also has been kind of been limbo, um, and that is generally the report from the county attorney's office unless I have any questions.
Any questions for Jeff? Commissioner?
Yes, Jeff would be a, a good year to have jury duty, wouldn't it?
Well, yes, except for we finally have a, a plan that we're going to try and implement, and so you would have avoided jury duty for eight months ago, which has been nice, um, but now you're gonna be a giddy day while we figure out this, this new plan for jury trials.
Imagine the court is gonna get very busy.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jeff? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, Tom, Auditor Treasurer?
I'm here, um, picking up big from, uh, where we're at here, a couple of quick items that you're probably well aware of, are, uh, our second half cash collections are coming in, our first half was relatively normal, and our second half, we, we find out we do, but October fifteenth is the deadline, and then in November, near the end, we send out our truth examination statements, so, uh, but the big, uh, the big push right now is, uh, the November third general election, so, um, in that general election, uh, our UACOMO overseas, US citizen living in other countries, um, that's going on September eight, so, um, which is well, our, um, our ballots were shipped yesterday, uh, to us, we have thirty different communications of the ballot, our twenty-one precincts, on various, um, school districts in the same precincts, things like that, so, uh, we're on task there, and, um, we have, we have a lot of...
I'm just gonna interrupt a lot, 'cause we're getting a lot of feedback, if you're not speaking, can you please mute your microphones, I can hear some, uh, speaking in the background and it's interfering, sorry about that, Tom.
Oh, that's okay, I, uh, we have, we have people at the window, sure.
Okay.
Whether or not, but, uh, so, uh, right now, uh, and I think this is a good thing, uh, we have about a thousand, uh, applications for absentee ballots, to give you an idea, uh, about that, we have, um, an absentee ballot is a ballot that, uh, would be used by somebody that normally votes in person, and we differentiate that from a mail ballot, a mail ballot, we send out to twelve different precincts, and then, um, they send it back, so they get one automatically, but at the same time, we have to have all our mail ballots here as well, just in case somebody wants to come in and vote here in person, so, uh, the polling site for absentee ballot is the courthouse, they can mail them, they can come in person, they can put them in the courthouse. So each absentee ballot or mail ballot has, uh, six pieces of, um, six pieces that go in each letter, including the envelope, outgoing envelope, and, uh, um, Shelley and Tammy, who are tremendous, are, and I, will, uh, will assess those and send them out, but, uh, other big concerns about the election, well, just a couple other pieces of data, in the primary, we have forty, four hundred and thirty-one absentee ballot applications, again, all the people who would generally vote in, uh, precincts in person, and next year, we're gonna have a thousand plus, um, so other concerns that have been expressed in the media and elsewhere, um, issues with the mail, um, we haven't experienced that very much, and I have talked to the folks at the post office, and they're, uh, I, I think they're a bit concerned, but in the primary, uh, Juanito over there was, was tremendous and also concerned about us, they, they hand-delivered some, uh, election stuff to us. Also, uh, Shelley has, uh, methods to track ballots to make sure they're getting to the right, to the right place and, and in the mail and stuff, so if you know, our mail system is, uh, is kind of funny, we know a lot of things that go in the mail here, go in the Migi, and then they come back, well, uh, we found out in the last, in the primary, that we can actually bring the mail to the post office and have them, uh, put the mail in, basically in their delivery route, so it doesn't have to go in the Migi and back, if you know what I mean, so that's what our plan is, to take our mail and to make it, you know, more, more expedient, uh, especially as we hear the election, um, and we have, uh, you know, I, I'm sure you folks have some questions, so I'd be, happy to visit about anything, and...
Tom? Any questions? Commissioner McRae?
Say, Tom, to, on a mail-in ballot to be accepted, does it have to be postmarked on Election Day, or does it have to be received by Election Day?
Postmarked, this, this, this time around, it's postmarked, and, uh, that's a change from the past, so we can receive that, um, if, we're not advertising that, but, but it is advertised, we can receive it as long as it's postmarked on Election Day or earlier, we can receive it seven days after.
Yep.
So our hand thing is gonna start for the elections the third, we're going to have to canvass the twelfth to the thirteenth, which is basically, you know, how we're looking at them, and, uh, and that's a change, and it was changed for the primaries, too, we had to receive it two days after, this time it's seven, you know, frankly, after seven days, we don't get a lot of stuff that's postmarked a week prior, uh, but it's something we'll have to go on the lookout for and, and to, uh, you know, make sure we count, so...
Mr. Chair, a couple, couple questions?
Go ahead, Jason.
Um, say, Tom, uh, you, we were talking, and you, you said you have enough, uh, uh, vote ju- voting judges and, and to fill the precincts, and then you'll be, there'll be precautions taken, uh, there, uh, during, on voting day?
Oh, yeah, we, we will have face masks for everybody who doesn't have one that wants one, now, we can't tell somebody they can't vote because they don't have a face mask, but primarily during the pri- or, uh, during the primary, most people wore their own face mask, and then we have a lot of cleaning equipment, we provide new pens, we have face shields for our election judges, we have about thirty election judges, and we're, uh, uh, we're very fortunate, I, I think I've said this before, in Milwaukee in April, when they had a primary, they had eighty precincts, and they only had enough to staff five, well, in, in our area, we have five precincts, and we have to narrow them down to five, so, we have about thirty election judges, and we have six that are waiting to be election judges, so we have enough, yeah, and it hasn't been a problem, you know, obviously, depending on the circumstance we run into in November, um, but it's kind of beyond our control, and there's kind of less voters at the polls, um, because of the FCT ballot, um, so I, I don't know how many we'll end up with, I think it may be a little, little more than a thousand, there's about seven thousand voters in the county and about two thousand mail-in voters, so that leaves, uh, um, several thousand, let's, um, score across nine different polls, five different...
Thanks, Tom.
Yep. Other question?
Any other questions for Tom? Um, I just had a, a meeting yesterday with AMC, and part of the discussion was concerning the, the mail-in ballots and stuff like that, and that was, that was one thing that they brought up was, you know, as, as far as the postmark, you know, if it's postmarked on Election Day, you know, uh, they can still count it up to seven days later, so...
Yeah, and, uh, we will do that, and that is a change from the past, in the past, we had to receive it on Election Day...
Yep.
...in order to have it counted, but now the postmark, and while, uh, income tax return, the postmark is, uh, is the deal now, I, I don't know that everything is postmarked, so it's, uh, it's something we're gonna have to work hand-in-hand with post office on, until we get, you know, postmarks on things that are, obviously, if you mail something on the second, um, from Minneapolis, it likely won't be here on the third, especially there's gonna be a lot of mail going out, so, um, I have visited with the post office a bit, you know, you know, just talking about those things, and they're well aware of, you know, some of the conversation that's going on, I think our post office here has been rather unaffected, you know, just locally by some of the things that are going on, but it's, it's such a system now that, you know, for instance, our ballots went from St. Paul to St. Paul to Migi to here, uh, so there, you know, so, there are things that can go wrong, I suppose, and, uh, so we're just trying to work through those, we did, uh, push up our mail date for our mail-in ballot, uh, we used to do it about a month before, this time, we're doing about six weeks prior to the election, just because of the mail system, and, uh, they're scheduled to go on September twenty-fifth, and then our, uh, our, uh, UACOMO ballots overseas, go, there are forty, uh, thirty-nine go out by email, man turn them back, uh, and then one, we have to mail, and mail is back, well, overseas mail is a little more basic, so, um, but yeah, we'll count them all and, uh, everything we get timely, and then we canvass at the end of, uh, at the end of, uh, the second week of November, uh, the thirteenth, so...
Okay. I've got a, a question for you, Tom, that, um, at the AMC meeting, they had a concern about, and that was when, uh, when ballots are picked up from the, uh, the drop box, uh, you pick that up, just, just one person go out and pick it up, or do you do that under dual control, or?
Uh, you know, Kevin, we don't do it under dual control now, but that's a good point, you know, I mean, two of us can go out there, and we have that drop box, which has been very nice, it does refer to tax collections, but, uh, we check it several times a day, and that might be a nice process that's put in place, to, uh, to go outside and pick it up and watch one another, that's a really good idea.
Yeah, they...
Voting hasn't started yet, we're getting a lot of questions about voting, where's my ballot, things like that, well, my, our ballots are on the way right now, so, um, and they, uh, they don't happen to be here until forty-six days before the election, which is November eighth.
Yep, yeah, that's, that's...
So, uh, that's a great, that's a great thought, and one that I, uh, you know, obviously, we, we talk to people that are here, but it could be an idea in case somebody, you know, gets it wrong.
Well, I'm, well, I'm sure there's people that have concern of one person going out and getting it, and, you know, somebody seeing, you know, who sent them in or whatever, and, and, uh, you know, one person by, by themselves, you know, this balance disappear, you know, who's gonna believe, probably?
Well, I'm, I'm with you, we have a lot of folks that are suspicious of the mail, and then, uh, just as far as process, what happens is we send out, uh, like I mentioned before, five pieces of mail, the outgoing envelope, the incoming envelope, both, both this date, by the way, and then instructions for the ballot with specific ballot, but we have thirty different ballots, we have to look at that, figure out which one to send, uh, which is still hard, but it takes up a lot of space, and then there's something called a secrecy envelope, which is a manila envelope without a name on it, that a voter will, uh, put their ballot in, and then, and then, uh, there's a signature envelope, which they have to sign, so Tom West signs this and puts my ballot in there, so once we pull that out...
Okay.
...we know where it's coming from, but we don't know who it's coming from, if you know what I mean, so we know which precinct put it in, or which, uh, um, mail ballot to put it in, so, uh, and we can't open those envelopes until we can start counting, so there's no way for us to, um, to know who, who sent one, I, I, I suppose sort of the envelope itself, but we don't know once that happens, so we'll, we'll put the secrecy envelope in the appropriate bin and open it.
Yep. What day do you actually start counting?
Uh, we start counting on Election Day.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, uh, we can, we can start counting a little bit before that, but this year, it's a little bit different with that seven-day period, uh, that, um, you know, one of the, one of the things that we brag about here is there are always the, the, the first results in to the state system because the last precinct has zero voters, so we send that in right away.
Okay. Commissioner McRae?
Yeah, Tom, Kevin, what you brought up was a really good idea, 'cause Tom, uh, uh, you know, if we end up into any recounts, and you just challenge ballots, you know, as long as, if we've got two people collecting, that's, you know, that's a good thing.
Yeah, that is a great idea, yeah, and I, it, one, frankly, I just, uh, I didn't think about, but, uh, you know, obviously, one person can go out there and collect tax payments, but once we start shooting ballots, we'll, uh, we'll have them too, you know, whether it's two people from here, or, um, you know, it could be two people, one from the reporter's office and one from here or something, but that's a process we'll put in place, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think they, they may have even mentioned just, just an election judge even, you know, um, you know, if you wanted to do that, or...
Yeah.
And I can, I can check with AMC, or you can check with AMC if you want, or...
Well, I have an election test, do you mean?
Well, one or two, you know, or one with, with maybe you or Shelley or whoever, so...
Yeah, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll make sure there are two of us in that, that, uh, I'll call for it, then I can talk to some other auditor treasurer and find out if they have the same... and find out if they have the same vote at all.
Yeah, and then they mentioned, uh, uh, one other thing they mentioned was possibly doing a login. You know, I don't know if you've done a login in the past, or as far as who you, who, who drops them off, you know, as, you know, individuals that drop them off? I don't know.
Well, when, 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 when we get them back, and, you know, people are sometimes concerned about somebody voting twice. And if anybody tries to vote twice, um, we're aware of that immediately. By the way, we'll argument with them.
Yeah, don't, don't, don't encourage that like the president did, so.
Well, I, I'll, I'll, I'll do my best. We're gonna have enough votes to, to worry about with, uh, just one of these, so, yeah, I'm with you.
Okay. Jason, do you have a question? Well, I thought I saw you at hand, okay? Um, any other questions for Tom? All right. Thanks, Tom.
Oh, thanks, guys. Yeah, take care. Have a good, uh, have a good morning.
Yep, you bet. Uh, Sheriff, it's Karen around. It was?
I am here, Kevin. Can you hear me?
Okay, yep.
I don't have anything formal to present. Um, I think I see you guys more than I see my own family, so I would just open myself. Any questions if you have it?
Any questions for Perrin? What's the number of jail?
Uh, jail's full.
Is it?
Per, operational capacity would say percent. You know, quite frankly, we're the only county entity that is twenty-four-seven. We never really changed anything, so.
Okay.
That is.
Any other questions for Perrin? Nothing we need to know about?
I don't think so, Kevin. I gotta be honest with y'all. With all the committees that I'm on, I don't know that I have anything to update y'all that you guys don't already know about.
All right.
Laughing sleep, how about that?
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you.
If you haven't had any time, if you have questions, just give me a show.
Okay.
All right.
What's the mail services? That?
Hi, everyone. Good morning.
Morning.
Say, uh, uh, that, you know, there's a lot of interesting things from all the department heads there, so it's hard to, hard to follow up on, but, uh, uh, we have done, you know, been working on several things, uh, A I S inspection, um, although, you know, we've had some challenging, uh, challenges dealing with, uh, you know, COVID-nineteen, getting inspectors trained. Uh, our A I S inspection program, uh, started basically Memorial Day weekend and continued through the summer months. We inspected almost forty-seven hundred boats over the summer. Our busiest location was Voyagers National Park, Rainy Lake Visitors Center, uh, boat launch with about three to four boats inspected an hour. Our next busiest location was the Bowman Boat Launch, and we also did inspections on Rainy Lake at the Tilsons and Dove Island Boat Launches. Uh, we cooperated with North St., North St. Louis County S W C D by providing inspectors for Cabotogoma and Ash River Voyagers National Park, uh, uh, boat landings. Uh, and they've, they've been reimbursing our cost to provide those inspectors. Uh, those Voyagers National Park boat landings were also very busy. Uh, on another note, the city of Rainier, as part of their boat launch project, is planning to install an A I S washing station in their new parking lot. The I, the A I S part of the development, uh, will be approximately forty thousand dollars in the near future. I will, uh, be presenting, uh, the request for a fifty percent grant from the county A I S funds. Uh, uh, as far as land use and septic, uh, updates, uh, we have done more advertising to educate the public about the requirement to obtain building land use permits. Uh, through September ninth, uh, twenty-twenty, we have had ninety-one permits, uh, which includes sixty-six building land use permits, sixteen S S T S permits, sewer permits, uh, three conditional use permits and three variances. Just recently, I was contacted by a property owner that has an interest in opening a custom meat processing business down in North Home area. A conditional use permit is required for that operation, so you may see that C O P come before the board in the near future. Uh, Steve Blair has been doing a great job for us, just trying to stay on top of all these things. Uh, our permit numbers are up from last year, and I think some of our efforts are helping with that, that process. I also think that, um, there's been a lot of interest, uh, from outside of the area about coming into more rural locations because of, you know, different things that are occurring in our, in our, um, you know, cities and, and also because of the pandemic. I think Nathan had mentioned, there's a lot of people coming up, uh, to, uh, uh, you know, get into more, more rural locations, whether that's hunting, fishing, camping, that kind of thing, but they're also looking at permanent plans. So, I just thought that was a, kind of a interesting tidbit that, uh, I just have been noticing as, as we've been giving, uh, uh, out information about permits and what our county, uh, provides. Um, on the Olive View Sewer Project, which is a major, uh, project that we've been working on, uh, completed site visits on Olive View Sewer Project with our engineers to develop punch lists for the contractors to complete. We've also been working on property owner requests throughout the project. All contractors have been working on final punch list items and are pushing to complete the project. We have a little over, over one million in retainage that must be paid when the contractors have completed their work. I expect this to occur before the end of the year. Uh, this project, uh, has provided a great solution for sewer management for approximately two hundred, uh, homes and seven commercial entities, uh, which will help protect, uh, the Voyagers National Park and, uh, Rainy River watershed for years to come. So, just a great, great project and very positive. And a, a, another thing related to that is, you know, I've been, and I think, uh, Commissioner McBride and Commissioner Pavlik are on the Voyagers National Park Clean Water Joint Powers Board and, uh, they're doing a comprehensive plan. They're working on a comprehensive plan and updated their comprehensive plan. So, provided, uh, the engineer with areas that may be included in the new comprehensive plan. Uh, and that Voyagers National Park Clean Water Joint Powers Board has been a great asset in obtaining funding for our sanitary sewer projects. So, it's been real positive and, uh, you know, we hope that, that will continue in the future. Uh, uh, M P C A permits and transfer station, uh, demolition site update. The transfer station has been busy during the COVID-nineteen event. Uh, Greg Williams, Teddy Pearson and Ryan Christie have all done a great job in managing the waste during, you know, this difficult period. It appears we have received more residential waste over the last few months. Um, the airport project has also been bringing quite a bit of demolition to our site. Uh, our newest hire in the office here, Brittany Harris, has been doing an excellent job in communicating with the guys and completing the necessary accounting for the operations, so that's been real positive. Um, we have almost completed our plans for the demolition site at the transfer station. That's related to M P C A permitting. We, we'll, we'll, we'll be, uh, submitting those to the M P C A with our application. The plans will provide, uh, the county with many additional years of demolition space, uh, which is really a big deal when you consider the cost of doing these things and when you get them set up. Wayne Fuller has been doing an excellent job helping with this project among many other things, and so he's been really great. Uh, we expect to have our final permit in place by the end of the, the year, depending on, you know, what's requested by the M P C A, uh, as additional information or adjustments as we go through that, that additional process. Uh, you know, we, uh, I, I, I think the board knows we received, uh, uh, the new dozer at our transfer demolition site. Greg, Teddy and Ryan have been using the dozer every day since it was delivered. Uh, we will be organizing some additional training on the dozer in the near future, once they have put, you know, some nut hours on it, on it, uh, so that they'll have, uh, it'll be more effective on the training. Uh, we expect that piece of equipment to be a great asset to our operations for years to come. And we also plan to upgrade the track loader and other equipment, you know, over the, uh, near future here, so. Uh, regional solid waste planning, uh, I'm continuing to participate in the solid waste officers of the Northeast region. Uh, this organization is moving forward with a regional solid waste planning process with the, in which the M P C A prefers. Um, uh, any regional plan would require the participating counties to establish a formal agreement or joint powers board for the planning process. And, uh, obviously any costs associated with that would be brought to the board as well. Uh, and, you know, we've just been in this office, been dealing with lots of different other things, I mean, many requests for information. How do we deal with, with multiple, um, issues and, and just dealing with, uh, you know, trying to, uh, help people resolve, uh, uh, problems that, that, uh, sometimes occur. Uh, and also, uh, uh, you know, we've dealt with a few wetland issues, one on the airport and, and, uh, been trying to help move those processes along, so. At that, I'd, uh, open it up for any questions.
Any questions for Matt? Uh, it doesn't sound like it, Matt.
Okay, well, thanks very much.
Yep. Have a good day.
You too.
Hi, access, I'm Jackie.
Hello. So, uh, I wanna start off by thanking the county board for the support they provided through staffing. I'm just very fortunate to have Mary skilled G I S technician and Mary Jean and an I S tech. And Philip, honestly, with all, the two of them supporting the work that goes on here, I probably would've run out of here screaming and crying, I wasn't supposed to go. Uh, they've both been very instrumental in getting a lot of projects done. Mary Jean's working very diligently on getting our G I S data prepped and ready for our next generation nine-one-one launch and validation stage. Um, and Philip's just been, um, phenomenal with his hands-on work in getting all of his devices rolled out and ready to go and supporting the end users, um, as they call it, need help. My project plan for twenty-twenty changed the difficulty. I thought it would be, uh, easier here with my server project being the primary project and a small number of end user devices, but of course that changed and now I'm, I'm reassessing projects on a weekly basis. Um, but we're still working on the server project. We're in the process of transitioning from the old hardware onto the new. Uh, the recorder server, server is actually being done right now as we speak. Um, I'm working on planning for audiovisual and teleconferencing systems for the boardroom and, um, and for other conferences, including the E O C, to try and accomplish remote web meetings where the board can actually present in a room together and the public can participate remotely. Um, we're looking at that as a CARES Act project, um, to, to be presented soon. Um, I'm constantly reviewing the end user systems, um, as you know, with the, with the recent R B A that you just approved earlier this morning. Um, something new this year, started working heavily with, um, the elections division of the I S A C. That's the Information Security Analysis Center that works on cybersecurity. There have been many exercises that were done true to ensure that our network is secure and, um, vulnerability testing to make sure that we will not, um, have any compromises during the election, and that will continue. Um, see, my next, my next project is analyzing the twenty firewall to make sure that it strikes the adequate to handle all the additional traffic that was seen through the, um, COVID-nineteen with all the remote working up. I, uh, I'm looking at adding VPN licenses. We're looking at reconfiguring the VPN to make the VPN users experience better so they can have access to all the resources they need in one spot. Right now I have people having to connect multiple ways in order to get to everything they need. We're trying to narrow that down to one. Um, preparing the twenty-twenty-one budget is a bit challenging with the constant changing in devices, but I'm hoping, um, to be able to tell Jenny, this is really the bottom line here, so, um, uh, so that, uh, once the budget is being approved by the board, you have a final number, um, and it won't be too much fluctuation going into twenty-twenty-one. And the last thing I wanna mention is that we've been pretty active with K T I. K T I is, um, meeting at fourth week and, um, our primary focus has been broadband and trying to find ways to utilize the remaining land and broadband dollar, or grant dollars that we have available to us to support COVID-related activities. A good example would be the purchase of a theme box that's being used by one of our elder care facilities to clean masks and other small items. Uh, it's a wonderful way to, it takes one minute to clean an item in there, so people say they can clean lots of things quite quickly. Um, with that, I, I will go on much longer. Um, I've been for you guys fairly recently, um, but I can certainly open any questions that you have.
Anybody have any questions for Jackie? Doesn't sound like it, Jackie.
Just, just, uh, just a big thank, too. Thank you, Jackie, for all your, uh, all your hard work and anything that I challenged you here, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, we all appreciate everything you guys do, your whole team over there, so.
Mr. Chair?
Please pass the line. Yes, Mr. Commissioner. You're needed.
Okay now?
Yep.
Okay, Jackie. Since I've been in, in the office and you, you worked on this for years and, and the sheriff's office and everybody, the E nine-one system, I mean, what a godsend to, to everybody, you know, not just, not just emergency response, but just for dummies like myself going out trying to find somebody's address. I mean, it's a great deal and, you know, you, you folks keep that updated and it's, it's wonderful.
Yeah. I, I agree.
Anybody else have anything for Jackie? All right. Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you.
Uh, is the recorder in?
Yep, I'm here. Good morning.
Okay.
Uh, just, I wanted to, oh, can you, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay, good. Uh, just an update. We have been fully staffed in my office since reopening of the courthouse. Uh, we, if you walked by, you've probably seen that we've made some adjustments to our layout to accommodate the space recommendations. Luckily, we have the vault that we could put a workstation back there. With the help of Jackie and Philip, we've been able to move some things around and then also be set up to work remotely if, if need be. Um, we were able to provide all services that we offer during the closure of the courthouse, except for passport applications. Um, those were strongly discouraged during that time anyway. They, they do have to be signed in person and the passport facilities, there are a number of regional facilities that accept the applications. We mail those to them. They were closed, uh, during the time we were closed and they remained closed a lot longer than we did. They are slowly reopening, uh, those facilities in phases and they have been processing applications. However, they are still expecting significant delays for applicants, um, even if they're just renewing. Those are, are still significantly delayed until they are back to their normal processing. Um, they're also not offering any expedited services for passports at this time, so unless someone has a life or death emergency, um, we do have a number phone people to call in that case, but otherwise there is no, um, no way to get them faster and they are saying they could take up to six months. Um, we are continuing to accept appointments for all of our services at the counter and that's been helping to maintain social distancing in the hallways and it is going really well. Uh, we are also utilizing the Dropbox outside and a lot of our customers are still using that. They find it, um, a really nice, convenient feature, so, uh, we're happy to have that. Um, summer's our busy season, so we have continued to be busy. Receipts are actually up from last year, even with the significant, um, loss in revenue from passports. Real estate remains busy. Um, it's been actually busier than normal. July was a big month for us. There's been a lot of refinances locally due to, um, low interest rates on, on home mortgages. And in addition to that, uh, it looks like we have a, a, average for summer or even possibly higher than average home sales in the area. Um, it's also marriage season, so we've been very busy with that. Many couples are still choosing to go ahead with weddings despite, um, the pandemic. And we have quite a few that have applied and, and will be getting married in the, in the next, um, month here. So, that's definitely keeping us busy. Um, research in the recorder's office is something that we do a lot of. And it increases typically around the time of taxes being due and also during the election. When people come into the courthouse, they often think, well, I'm here, I should check on something. And so we will be ramping up to see more of that, uh, I assume in the next, um, month or two here. And then, um, just another update on the recorder front. The, I meet with the recorders in my district. We typically don't meet more than twice a year, but we have been trying to meet on a monthly basis just to keep in contact with everything going on, changes in, in how we're doing things, you know, due to the climate of the pandemic. And that, that's going really well. It's nice to have others to visit with and get feedback from. So, uh, that's been very helpful. We are continuing to work with, um, the GIS department. Mary Jean is working so hard on getting the GIS up to date and making changes. We often, uh, do some research for her to help with, um, getting all of that information in there correctly. We get a lot of calls. People think, you know, that they, they own the neighbor's house because there's a line off. And, and so with the help of our records and, and Mary Jean's expertise, we've been able to make some corrections and corrections and will continue to do that. Um, we also had a large project last year with, uh, the surveyor's office. We spent, um, a good amount of money to have the record scanned over there. And during the closure of the courthouse, we had some time to, um, work on getting those records indexed so that they're easily accessible for read. So that's been a big project that is now completed. And then we do have another, uh, project going on. Going into fall and winter, we like to work on our back indexing, which is getting all of our, our old documents online for people so that they have access to that through the website and as a subscription service. So we're always working on that. And then we're also working on a project in the back room, scanning in what, what are known as abstracter cards. Um, and they are a duplicate record of all the images that we have. They're very handy and, uh, we do not have an electronic image of those. So we, we're getting those scanned in and indexed as well. And they really help with getting, uh, information to the public faster. So, uh, that's a basic, um, summary of, of what we've been up to. Does anyone have any questions?
All right. Any questions, anyone? Uh, doesn't look like it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. You have, have a good day. Uh, Veteran Service Office, Mark. How are you?
Mr. Chair, I am not sure if Mark is available. I think he may have had an appointment. So.
Isn't that Mark?
If Mark is, I, I don't see him online. Do you see him?
Yeah.
All right. Well, if he's there, then that's great.
I can't hear yourself there, Mark.
Let me see it.
You're muted.
Let me see it.
Turn your mic on. You're still muted.
I can do that on my end. Okay, I, I think you've already turned it off. There we go.
We're good to go.
Okay. Oh, they say I'm showing a green mic, so I can figure out what's going on.
Sorry about that, Mark. I muted everybody. Um, we were getting a lot of feedback. So.
Okay. Um, so anyways, I'll start with the base stuff. So we're, uh, essentially our office is open five days a week and normal, uh, appointments only at this time. We are not conducting a walking day, but we've expanded those days for, to take, uh, appointments. Um, quite honestly, we've got, uh, we're seeing everybody that needs to be seen. I mean, almost on the next, you know, pretty much a next day basis. Uh, so that's going really well. Uh, the, uh, the clients, the veterans have been very responsive, very supportive as far as, uh, complying with the COVID, uh, restrictions. Uh, one of the things that we've really done is, uh, increased our outreach efforts, which is, I think, you know, basically we're looking, I could spend a lot more time going out to the service organizations in the county. That includes like the DFWs, American Legion, DAB, uh, meeting with those folks. And it's been now very productive for us, uh, you know, making contact with folks. Essentially more people outside of the International Fall area. Obviously, the county's not just International Fall. Uh, the other thing is, is we've increased our presence on the radio, uh, doing it on the radio at least once a month now. And we're looking to do even more than that possibly in the future here. Uh, getting feedback from veterans in the county. They are here, the, the radio shows, so that's good. Um, the other thing, uh, we're looking at increasing our downtown signature as far as like, we've got good signage now. And then we're looking at a couple of other things too, like doing the on and on the Wells Fargo building in order to make our office stand out a little bit more. So when people move through town or whatever, they'll definitely see where we're at. Uh, there are a few people that still believe we're in the courthouse, but most people now are used to coming down here to the, uh, to like, I guess, the Wells Fargo or the Third Street office. Um, we're looking at this year, our, excuse me, uh, our van replacement plan is coming together. Uh, quite honestly, I'm targeting July of, of next year, July of 21. Um, and to give us a new van. Our current van is a 2014. It's got 200,000 miles and I would just like to make that change over. The van is, is running well. Everything's going pretty good. We are starting to have maintenance issues that pop up. However, we want to, uh, turn that van over while this one still has some resale value left in it. Um, lease agreement with Wells Fargo, we still have not concluded that. Um, and quite honestly, I, I've not heard from Wells Fargo for quite some time in regards to the lease. So, uh, we do have our, we feel that our teleconferencing, uh, capability this year. Thanks Jackie and KTI. And, uh, right now I'm addressing you on that. And, uh, however, we haven't, uh, really been booking it for veterans yet. I mean, because there's just hasn't been folks coming to us and saying they want to utilize this system. However, it's still available. So based on that, um, do we have any, do I have any questions?
Anybody have any questions for Mark? No, doesn't look like it, Mark.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thanks for everything you do.
Appreciate it.
Complex. Dean? How are you? You're muted too. Your mic's on mute. There. That's perfect. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, everything at the complex is going real well. Um, uh, on a COVID-related issue, um, the shield in the panels, like I addressed before in the past, they're all installed and been completed and everything in that respect has kind of calmed down here considerably. So. And the one thing that I'd like to make note of is, uh, during, during my travels in and out of the building and around the properties and things, uh, the, the employees here are doing a wonderful job wearing masks all the time as well as the, uh, general public as they enter the building and all that. I've been watching and, and wondering how that would go. And it's going real, real well. And everybody's doing a real nice job on that.
Good.
Um, we're in the process right now, our, uh, new HPA heat system, uh, for the third floor is getting ready to kick in. Um, they started, or, uh, we have started. Uh, right now we're doing a lot of pre-work, uh, with myself and Jeff and with the electricians on the job. Uh, doing some goal work and stuff like that. Um, I was told that the, the crew will be, uh, rolling into town on tomorrow, which would be Wednesday. And they'll be starting to begin with some of the bigger, heavier work, uh, and that kind of thing with the piping and everything. Uh, the placement of a, uh, outside, uh, condenser will happen tomorrow morning. Um, so, uh, all the equipment is here and ready to go. And so that's going to be kind of exciting. Um, things are going to ramp up here in the next few days and, um, yeah, uh, it'll be real nice. Um, I'm going to have to go to a doc and schooling. Um, it's a four-day deal, two hours each day. Uh, nothing too serious or anything like that on how to run the system after it's been commissioned online. Um, that'll be real interesting. I'm looking really, I'm really looking forward to doing that. That's going to be, that's going to be fun. Um, it's going to be like a WebEx style, uh, deal where, like what we're doing here today. Um, I'll take part in the classes and stuff like that. So. Um. Uh, I started the, uh, my rounds, uh, going to all the city gar, or the county garages throughout the county. I was down in Silverdale here last week and Nethop. And I'm doing all the cleaning tunes on the heating systems down there. And I'll travel to, uh, after today, actually, I'll get out to, uh, Big Falls and Little Fork. And then of course winding up with Birchdale and, uh, Lomond. And then I'll even, I usually take a run out to our little schoolhouse there right on the, uh, almost the Clemenson. And I'll check that out to make sure everything is good in there too. So. I go there in the spring and I go there in the fall or, uh, if I, if there's anybody that wants me to run out there or whatever, I just run out there. So. Um, that's all going real well. All the garages are in good condition as far as heating goes. And I always coach them to keep the snow off their tanks and things like that. And, and, uh, they're really good at doing that. And I met Terry, the new guy there in Silverdale, real nice guy. Um, uh, he'll, he'll do well for us. Um, see what else can I tell you? Um, there's a lot of projects I did around here this year at malls, so I call them, uh, to help us with the heating situations and things. Make things more usable, um, and controlled. Um, and I'm, uh, curious to see how a lot of that pans out here. It could be real, real good for like Terry down here in the basement. And, uh, some of the other rooms, um. Um, one thing that happened this year, I was chasing a lot of mice around, uh, that came in. Um, a couple of them, uh, we were able to get them in the traps and things, but you know, I was asking around the area to, my own house, I had a lot of action there with mice. And I was, uh, a pest guy here, Tom, from A+ Pest. But all the conditions were right for, uh, rodents this year. Uh, starting from the, from the winter of last year, there was plenty of snow cover. Things were dry and like that, or wet. Uh, there was plenty of moisture and water for them. But this year it all dried out. And so the critters were running around looking for water is what they thought. So they were, um, everybody had problems everywhere, uh, with the mice this year. So we had a couple in here, but we, uh, chase them around and some care of that. So. Outside of that, um.
You know, they used to have a cat there at the courthouse.
Oh, right?
Yeah. Yeah, back, back years ago, before I even started as commissioner. We probably remembers it.
Oh, my gosh. Really?
Any, anybody have any questions for?
Yeah, I didn't see any questions at this point. Um, I'm happy to answer any question you have.
Or do you have anything else you want to add or?
I think that's about it. It's been going real well.
Okay. It looks like Brian might have, uh.
Dean, we're all, we're all ready for winter. You got your plow ready. Uh, you, uh, we got the black hole systems are all going and the heat.
I'll be shutting down air conditioning here this week actually, actually. And, uh, the switch over will start to begin. I see we're going to get a few cold days here coming up. Uh, the next three days actually are going to be like 55 and, and freezing in the evenings. And so, um, we're going to crack off forest land here today and then get them going. And then, um, we might have to pop off the big boiler, one of them down here, just to take the edge off for everybody here. Because I can tell that it's starting to drop down and spend that transition time of the year, you know, and.
Yep.
To get these 70-degree days, first days and, and nights. And then all of a sudden you get hit with that 50-degree day and a 29 at night. So.
Yep.
It's kind of a tough, we're kind of in that rock pot, but, uh.
Green mode. Yeah.
If I get too many, uh, if I get too many, uh, calls or whatever, I'll have to get her going. So.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you very much, Dean, for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I help you? Look at another rat cat. I mean, he was. Little bit of cat to it.
Actually, I need to say care of him, but that, that cat would go up in, in the middle of the, you know, in the judicial area there. The judge would be up there with a trial and everything was hot. The cat would jump up on the judge's desk, lay down his papers. And the judge loved that cat and never let anyone move him. He got to do what he wanted. So.
Yeah. How, how long ago was that?
Oh, gee, you know, he, he looked to be quite old, but he died probably, you know, my, my first decade in office, you know. And, uh, and after that, he says, you know, she just didn't feel she could keep taking care of him because she'd go up the lake a lot in the summer and stuff. And, but, uh, yeah, that was pretty neat.
But Larry didn't like him too, too much, right?
What's that, Kevin?
Said Larry didn't like him too much, right?
Oh, Larry Cheezus couldn't, he couldn't stand cats. We'd be at the company board there and, and another place of a hot issue and discussion. That cat would come up there and he would always go to Larry Cheezus and drop right on his, uh, papers. Uh, sorry. But then push that cat out to treat somebody's, um. Okay.
Well, thank you, Dean.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Anybody else have anything?